Good morning. At our July 14 meeting, we rescheduled the board workshop on board budget to this morning due to the length of our regular meeting. The workshop for July 21 is now called to order. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougall?
Present.
Ms. Campbell?
Ms. Campbell?
Ms. Campbell, are you still there?
Ms. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan. I understand Mr. Susan is on his way.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm present. I had myself muted. My bad.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we will now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board members, you have each been provided a projected budget for 2021 with some history. The amount of FSBA dues which comes out of Project 001205 and Object 737 is $23,524, which amounts to $4,704.80 per member. Ms. Duskovich has declined to be a member. There was conversation at the June 10 work session surrounding the board budget and the purpose of this workshop is to clarify board wishes of how our dollars are distributed. At this point, I will open it up for comments or questions. Ms. Lysinski is with us this morning to address any questions that may come up. Ms. Duskovich, I know you had some question about how our dollars were allocated. Do you want to start us, or...?
You know, I just am looking at this for the first time in a long time. So, the dues and fees, the $25,000 in dues and fees, is that for FSBA?
Yes, it is.
I thought that was coming, it wasn't reflecting in prior years in this part of our budget. I wish Mr. Susan was here because he was the one that was, that had concerns.
Ms. Escobar, the object 312, professional and technical, what is that? Or Ms. Lysinski, either one of you? Okay, legal ads will be coming out of the object 312.
And one of the things that we did this year is make sure that the budget is aligned where the expenditures are. So, the legal ads were expensed last year under the same line with the $25,000, which makes it a little confusing. So, this year, I asked Pam to move that into the line where you see, the line 18 that you talked about. So, now that's going to align better so you can see what those are for the ads and then the dues is just going to be for the dues. So, we're trying to align the budget to where we actually execute. So, it'll look, the historic will make more sense in the future.
Got it. So, on the, down at Function 7100, the dues and fees down there, I'm assuming that's like what we pay for conference?
Conference fees, those kind of things. Yes, ma'am.
If I can interrupt, Ms. Belford, does this come for you, Ms. Escobar? Can somebody email it to me? I've even put my glasses on and I still can't see. It's attached to the calendar item, is that what you're saying? I can't hear. I can't hear and I can't see this morning. I'm having all kinds of issues.
Good morning. At our July 14th meeting, we rescheduled the board workshop on board budget to this morning due to the length of our regular meeting. The workshop for July 21 is now called to order. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougall?
Present.
Ms. Campbell?
Ms. Campbell?
Ms. Campbell, are you still there?
Ms. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan, I understand Mr. Susan is on his way.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm present. I had myself muted, my bad.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we will now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic-
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation-
Under God, indivisible-
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board members, you have each been provided a projected budget for 2021 with some history. The amount of FSBA dues, which comes out of Project 001205, and Object 737 is $23,524, which amounts to $4,704.80 per member. Ms. Duskovich has declined to be a member. There was conversation at the June 10 work session surrounding the board budget, and the purpose of this workshop is to clarify board wishes of how our dollars are distributed. At this point, I will open it up for comments or questions. Ms. Lysinski is with us this morning to address any questions that may come up. Ms. Duskovich, I know you had some question about how our dollars were allocated. Do you want to start us, or?
You know, I just am looking at this for the first time in a long time. So, the dues and fees, the $25,000 in dues and fees, is that for FSBA?
Yes, it is.
I thought that was coming, it wasn't reflecting in prior years in this part of our budget. I wish Mr. Susan was here because he was the one that was, that had concerns.
Ms. Escobar, the Object 312, professional and technical, what is that? Or Ms. Lysinski, either one of you. Okay, legal ads will be coming out of the Object 312.
And one of the things that we did this year is make sure that the budget is aligned where the expenditures are. So, the legal ads were expensed last year under the same line with the $25,000, which makes it a little confusing. So, this year, I asked Pam to move that into the line where you see, the line 18 that you talked about. So, now that's going to align better. So, you can see what those are for the ads, and it's going to, and then the dues is just going to be for the dues. So, we're trying to align the budget to where we actually execute. So, it'll look, the historic will make more sense in the future.
Got it. So, on the, down at Function 7100, the dues and fees down there, I'm assuming that's like what we pay for conference-
Conference fees, those kind of things, yes ma'am.
Okay.
If I can interrupt, Ms. Belford, does this come for you, Ms. Escobar? Can somebody email it to me? I've even put my glasses on, and I still can't see. It's attached to the calendar item, is that what you're saying? I can't hear. I can't hear, and I can't see this morning. I'm having all kinds of issues.
But I'll let you know what to do now, right?
I can get it if it's on the calendar, it's fine. My computer is open. So, it sounds like we've cleaned it up so that it's going to be more clear because with the fees for the Florida Today, or wherever we post our, have been mixed in with our FSBA, which has never made a ton of sense to me. I think one of the concerns we had at the last meeting when we were discussing this, where when we originally had allocated not just the $25,000 for FSBA, but we allocated enough for FSBA plus the FCSBM, which was $2,500 per person.
And I had asked Ms. Lysinski about that. Could you, you did a kind of a historical look. When we spoke, you had indicated that you did not think that those dollars were ever actually allocated to the budget. Is that correct, Ms. Lysinski?
If I understand the question, my understanding is that the $25,000 was always for membership of the FSBA or another organization if the member chose. I think the member decided on which organization they wanted to be a member of.
No, this is before your time, so I'm not being critical. But we had given specific instruction for an allocation to be enough for each board member to join both organizations at the time. Because Mr. Susan had chosen to do both, and a couple of us were considering at the time to do both. So, the allocation should have been $25,000, if that's what FSBA is, plus $12,500.
We gave specific instructions to have both of them put in, and that we could use that money in the event that it wasn't for membership fees. It was over at the Brevard Achievement Center, and we did it at the meeting, and there was a majority of us that wanted to do it. It was board direction, and that was, you're 100% right, Ms. Duskovich.
But I think if we look at the historical adopted budget for the board, that never actually came to fruition. If you look at that line item, Objects 737 dues and fees all the way across historically, that never actually occurred.
So, then where did that money come from when we paid for Mr. Susan to do both?
That I do not know. Ms. Lysinski, did you see any indication that we had paid out additional dues on behalf of Mr. Susan for dual membership?
I did not see that. I'm looking at Ms. Strickland, if she may have history on that.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but I can tell you that if we needed to add money for Mr. Susan to belong to a second organization, we would have taken it out of a reserve account that the CFO controls. It's called school reserves. So, we would have been able to fund anything like that. And if you guys do go over your budget, we fund it. We don't let you run in the hole.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Strickland.
I have like 42,000 issues with what this conversation is going. Again, not an attack on you, you are just here, but how could board direction not ever get put into fruition? And what is the CFO-controlled school reserves account, and how much is in it, and what comes out of it?
If I may, we have $800,000 a year that we set aside for any kind of emergencies that come up. We help schools out with items. Anything that didn't get funded in the budget, it's always been a line item in the budget. It was typically a reserve that you could absolutely see at the beginning of every year. And, you know, it's not, CFO-controlled is just, I meant, that's where it's reported. It's reported under the purview of my, you know, I kind of monitor it, but the superintendent can come and ask for money. Sue Han, if she's got an emergency, can come and ask for money. So, it's not just the CFO's slush fund. I didn't mean for it to sound like that. And as far as board direction to add that to your budget line item, I'm sorry, but that never got back to the budgeting office, or we would have taken care of it.
Thank you.
Karen, I believe at the end of the year, if that reserve is not used, it falls to the bottom as part of fund balance?
Correct.
Correct, sir. That's absolutely correct.
And this year, this account, $8,547,000 has fallen to the bottom.
Say that again, Ms. Lysinski, I'm sorry.
Oh, $8,547,000 have fallen to the bottom this year, and that was because of the COVID, mainly of, you know, the stay at home, and I believe the board members, you did not travel like you normally travel in a year. So, part of the travel funds was moved to a COVID savings, and the remainder that was not expensed has fallen to the bottom.
That $8,000, I'm confused. Do we have our own little reserve fund for our board budget? Because the only reserve fund that has referenced so far is an $800,000 reserve fund.
If you go over to the, if you go over to the right, where you see expenditures, 2019 and 20, the expenditures this year was $29,317, and you can look further to the right for the historic expenditures. And then you can see this year, your expenditures were much lower than normal, and the two driving areas was the reduce of travel, and then member not, yourself not being part of the FSBA. And also, Ms. Escobar does an amazing job scrutinizing funds, and so there was a lot of printing and supplies that was not done historically.
So, at least $5,000 of that was because Mr. Susan and I didn't join the FCSBM this year. And I think that is the money that he wanted to discuss, and I'll leave it with you.
Yep.
Okay.
So, one of the issues that we had was that we put the money in, we gave board direction, and somehow that never, as we found out, didn't make it back to the budget office, which isn't anybody's fault, it's inside this room. But the idea is, is that that money should be able to stay within the board. Unless we give direction, it shouldn't be taken out, and we should be able to use it for a host of other things that we would like to do, as far as sending letters to our constituents, and notifying our people of different things that we need to do, that's all. And it's consistent with the rest of the budget, where every, almost every one of our quarterly, we get transfers from one budget item to another budget item. It's consistent with every budget within every school that transfers from one budget to another. And it shouldn't, there shouldn't be restrictions on the school board's money unless we put it on ourselves. So, that's what I was discussing, that we shouldn't have to defend keeping that money for constituents, or whatever we want to do, that's all.
I struggle a little bit with that, Mr. Susan, only because I know that we have gone and taken back funds from our schools that have not been expended to, as well as departments that have not been expended, to be able to fund our priorities in the district. And I understand where you're coming from, but it just feels a little uncomfortable to me to say that they can't take our dollars back, but we can take dollars back from other funds.
So, one of the issues that we have is, is that the money was never properly allocated into the funds to begin with, right?
Right.
The other issue is, is that we are the school board who makes the decisions on where the money goes, and what decisions we make, not the schools. So, if we find that there's a school that has extra money at the end of the year, and we need to allocate it, and we, as a school board, feel the same way, then we all do that. That there is, you're 100% right. On a given year where schools are sitting back, and they're trying to, where they're losing their budget, yeah, that's our decision. But what my point is, is that we, as a board, make that decision. We, as a board, make a decision that if the schools, we have to do that. It was our decision to take that money back from the schools to reallocate, per the superintendent's recommendation. We control that, that's all. And if at the end, we want to, in the middle of a situation like right now, communicate to our constituents, or even do other things, like, we should be able to do that, that's all. Just the same as all the schools do. And, I mean, they send out center voice messages, they send out communications, they send out emails, they send out all that stuff. And my idea was, is that if we're able to, at the beginning of the year, kind of shuffle it around and say, hey, you know what, we're not going to do that membership, we're going to, we would rather do letters, or we would rather do emails, or we would rather do, which every other organization inside this organization does, I think we should be able to do it, that's all.
So, your point, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, is you just, you want that process to be more transparent of, because I think we, as a board, we do approve, when we approve the budget, we basically approve those dollars being reallocated, right? So, when they, the dollars that fall to the bottom line. So, if I'm understanding correctly, you just want the process of that decision to be more-
Transparent and powerful.
Intentional.
Like, when we find out at the end, like Ms. Duskovich was asking a question, she said, hey, where's this? And all of a sudden, they're like, well, it's not there. Or we find out that the information never went back. That's our decision. That's our decision as a board to make those things, not anybody else. We are the board, we are in charge of making budgetary items, we are in charge of all of the process that comes from our budget. So, we should be the ones making that. And that process was broken, and it wasn't there. So, we just need to reinstitute that. And if we want to have the in-between to be able to, I'm not saying at the end of the year, that schools need to give back, but we don't. That would be the message, you're 100% right, we don't want to send. But what I'm saying is, is that at the beginning of the year, just like every other organization inside this organization, schools, every site base, if we want to allocate certain dollars from our budget to do certain things, we should be able to, rather than being handcuffed to only memberships. Because, like, when we go to the FSBA conference, I don't stay in the hotel, I stay in a place up the road to try to save money, so that I can then do things for my kids, so that I can do things to try to, and that's what my goal was this year, was to save up enough money by staying in a, like, basically a motel, so that at the end of the year, I'd be able to do something for a lot of my constituents and my people. And at the end of the year, when I tried to do that, it was just kind of like, well, it's part of membership, we can't do that. And that's when it started to snowfall. So, I just wanted to kind of, that was the process that I was looking for, more transparency, you know, you're right. But our decision-
Ms. Belford?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Ms. Belford?
Yes, Ms. Campbell.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you hear me. I think, for me, you know, we've, obviously, we've talked around the issue of the money never got added for the opportunity for board members to join both organizations. That didn't happen, but I think we can move past that. And now that other organization is not really an option for us right now, so we're, we have the budget that we have. I don't, there's no reason to increase it back up when there's not a second organization. But moving forward, you know, I could agree with Mr. Susan on this, that we can have some flexibility, but I don't necessarily agree with moving things completely out of categories. I mean, if you, you know, travel, is travel unless we want to just re-label that. But I do think there is somewhere in there, and Ms. Escobar would have to help, you know, we had paid, I believe it was about $800 and something dollars towards a communication, like a newsletter service, that we decided later not to do because, or we canceled this year because, you know, there were other things that were happening, we just didn't need to make use of that anymore. What line item does that kind of thing come out of? Because that fits perfectly with what Mr. Susan was talking about, a way to communicate with our constituents, you know, what line item is that, and how much is in there?
Mrs. Belford, may I address that? Yes, please, thank you, Ms. Escobar. Ms. Campbell, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Government and community relations paid for that service for us.
Oh, okay.
It came out of their advertising dollars.
Okay.
So, if I may, because I'm the one person that doesn't spend the FSBA allocation, and I was using half of that for another organization, and now I'm not doing that. So, that allocation, and I kind of agree with Mr. Susan on this, that you guys are using those funds for either travel, or professional development, or, I mean, to learn, to grow, to get in communication with others. I want to do that in a different way, yet if it's only allowed for FSBA, then there's no allocation for me to do that in a different manner. And so, I agree that dollars that fall to the bottom, I do think we need to at least be notified at a very minimum that these have fallen to the bottom. But just to take them out of our budget, when we're told we can't use them, because we're not using them in the way they were originated, and then to just take them without any notification is concerning. So, the transparency is an issue, but also the flexibility of individual board members to use these dollars in the, I mean, to use these dollars in a way to help us be more effective in our positions is kind of necessary.
If I could follow up with that, I think the process that I think would be good, which is the process that, again, this organization follows, is that at the beginning of year, we say, these are the monies that we're going to allocate towards the certain things that we're going to do. So, if next year, we want to put in, yeah, there's some allocation dollars that are going to go to X for communications and all that stuff for each one of the board members, or if we want to take to where each board member takes their own budget on, and within that window, takes the responsibility of that, I think that that would be one good recommendation to do, is that we collaboratively figure that out at the beginning of the year going forward. And then going from the reverse, is that any money that comes to the bottom line, not notified that they're taking it out, it's our decision to make that. So, I would say that any money that falls to the bottom line, we, as a board, discuss what we should do with it, and where it goes. That's it. And that's kind of like what we're doing now. That's within our right. There is no policy procedure or anything else out there that allows the non-board members to make those decisions without board member approval. Does that make sense to you? So, I just, I just think that that would be a good process, if we, at the end of the year, discuss what we wanted to do with the monies that we fall to the bottom line, and at the beginning of the year, we come up with a game plan for the year, that's all. I just didn't want to be handcuffed, because we transfer a whole lot of money in between every school, every organization, every department, every, all of them, and we're saying that we can't. I just-
I think one of the bigger problems is, this has been set up this way for a long time. When FSBA used to bill as a board and not individually, and so it's one line item for the board, when it's not really a board whole expense anymore, it's an individual expense. So, maybe we solve the problem with individual, you know, five individual dues and fees accounts. That way, I know that one of us was looking at joining CivMIL this year, but the membership was extensive. Yeah, and we thought, oh, that's going to eat up. Well, maybe I want to be part of CivMIL, but not FSBA, and I could choose to choose my organization if it's my allocation, instead of this. I think that's the problem here.
I think you're right. I think that the way this organization set up its budget for its board members in the past is not consistent with what many of the other municipalities and elected officials' budgets are. So, maybe that's something that we put on our agenda for going forward. But in this case, what I thought was, inside of what we're doing now, would be a good opportunity for us to communicate to our constituents, being the crisis that we're in and everything else, and that's why I was trying to push to do that. Plus, there's a lot of good things that we do, and I wanted to let people know, that's all. Ms. Belford, if I may, just for clarification, departments across the organization have their budget, and inevitably, every year, money is not expended across departments, across the district. And our practice is consistently, to funds that are not expended, are not carried forward for the departments, and they become part of the non-recurring fund balance at the end of the year. I believe the practice, the same practice, before I say that. However, departments also have the opportunity to say, these dollars look like they're falling to the bottom, but there is an intended expense coming up, and they work with finance to allow, if you will, a carry forward for specific intentional purposes from one year to the next. Typically, the practice is, is we do not carry forward, but there's always exception handled on a department-by-department basis. I believe the board's budget, $9,000, same practice, that it's budgeted, if it's not expended, it becomes part of the bottom. But there certainly, that was what was allocated to the board by board approval previously. And, you know, as we look at this, there is a total of approximately $11,000 that was not expended, that was budgeted, it had been, as part of our normal process, been scooped and not carried forward, if you will, part of the fund balance. But certainly, you know, to Mr. Susan's point, the budget is at the will of the board. This certainly is the opportunity, those funds are still available, not to, that could be allocated to some other purpose at this point, because all of fund balance has not been committed at this point. So, this certainly is the opportunity for the board to provide direction on those funds that fall into the bottom line. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. And I think one of the things that you said that is perfect in there is, is that when they have an issue, they say, hey, these are my funds, these are, this is what's going on. We have intended instances for that in the future. That wasn't done during this process, we just need to put it in, that's all. I don't think, like, there's this hidden secret here that, you know, everybody's, this is just a process, and we just need to reestablish it, and that's it, that's all. this is just a process, and we just need to re-establish it, and that's it, that's all.
So, it seems like, you know, all I'm seeing that's really, I say discretionary, because, you know, it's individual to each of us, is the $2,200 for each board member, the $1,500 travel, $700 dues and fees, and I know from some of the conferences that we've done, if, you know, there's been times where I had, um, gone, you know, traveled up and back, and so my conference, I needed more conference money, but I didn't need the travel money necessarily, and so Ms. Eskerbar was able to move some of my travel money to cover my extra registration costs, right? Um, so, but, so are we, are we dancing around the 2,200? Is the 2,200 what we want to be? Because that's, that's, that's what's discretionary as far as which conferences we go to, what professional development. It's my understanding that if somebody wanted to go to professional development outside of FSBA, that's what that money could be for, when we go to Tallahassee, um, to, um, participate in our, you know, meeting with our delegation, that comes out of that, um, travel money. What, what is it, or are we talking about the membership, the dues and fees, 25,000? So, if we, if, in that case, if we make that discretionary, like I think you were suggesting, Mr. Susan, that we each, we divide that $5,000 out among each member, and if you're going to use a chunk of it towards FSBA, you know, for example, Ms. Ms. Duskovich doesn't do that, and so she would have that $5,000 towards joining another organization or doing other professional development. What exactly are we wanting to be more discretionary?
I think it, it behooves us to be able to transfer, so here's an instance, here's what happened. So, last year, Janice Schultz, Director of Career and Technical, and I, had an opportunity to fly to Johnson Space Center to negotiate a deal where they would bring back a NASA manufacturing center to one of our schools, right? That was a huge opportunity, and I was requested by NASA and the EDC to go out there. So, I didn't stay a hotel room, I, I've caught a flight at, you know, early in the morning, caught a rental car, drove all the way back, and lo and behold, we were able to get the offer to come back to this, to this county to bring a manufact, a NASA manufacturing center to one of our schools. That is an instance of us using our travel, right? But had we not had that little bucket of travel, this conversation would have had to happen before we did it. So, there's other instances that'll come up, like what ended up happening, which is what triggered me to do this, which is what Suhan had, um, she had worked out in negotiations with the county to put in a car loop at Ralph Williams, right? This is a great opportunity for us to reach out to our constituents and let them come, because that road that was being blocked was blocking up emergency travel and everything else, and it was hailed by the neighborhoods. But nobody really knew what was going on. So, when you walk around inside there, a lot of those people were like, what is going on here? Are they building a new school, or are they building? It would be nice during that time to be able to send out something, saying, hey, here's what we're doing as a school to benefit you as a community. That's what a lot of elected officials do, that's what a lot of, I mean, it's just a consistent, so being able to do that and having the flexibility is where I, what brought this conversation on. I think moving forward, what you're asking is, is where, I think we have a discussion as a board, um, what we want to do. And if that's going to be individual budgets, if that's going to be being able to transfer between the two, um, like when a school wants to buy furniture, and they want to transfer it from one fund to another, they put in for a transfer, right? So, there should be a process. So, if we want to send out, you know, um, letters or some kind of email message or something like that, then we should be able to say, hey, we're transferring this to this, be completely transparent, and then be able to do it. That's, that's all it is, the flexibility. And I think Ms. Duskovich nailed it on the head, is that when this stuff was formed and these policies and procedures were formed, there was one organization that everybody went to for their, for their, um, for their, you know, for the school boards. There was tight travel, which is, there wasn't opportunities like what I just talked about, and a lot of the school board members didn't have stuff going on. There's just more going on that we needed to be flexible to address, that's all, if you're asking what that is.
So, some of that would seem like you, you would need a bigger budget, and I don't...
No, I, I don't think so, because I would be the first person to tell you that I wouldn't stay at a hotel, I wouldn't stay at that little motel up the road from the conference, I would just go and drive there. And I would do that, because I would know that it would mean more to me to send out stuff. And I, I think as an individual board member, I would like to do that. I mean, I, I, you know, there's just little things. If I knew that I had the flexibility, then I may do other things that benefit my constituents and my schools more, that's all.
Well, and to your point with a little different twist, I think, you know, I would be willing, if there's a, a national conference or something, that we want to send one of us to, and that member has used up, you know, for, for example, Ms. Belford has expressed interest at several points to, for NSBA, um, and we have a member or two who knows by the end of the fiscal year, we won't have used it all up, and we want to transfer, you know, I'll transfer a couple hundred dollars of my travel budget over to you, because I haven't used it, and we can send one of our members, I'm, I'm fine with that. So, maybe, um, can I just, I don't know what you think, I'd like to, you know, maybe suggest, you know, we get the, the budget in a big picture, right? Um, each, the monthly reports. Um, how often do the schools, can we do something like when you're sending out the schools, here's where you are, here's your state, what, can we get something, a similar statement like that for our specific budget?
Sure, absolutely. Um, our, the budget office does do that, and so we will ensure that you get the expenditures and where you're, you're spending monthly.
So, we can see where we might.
And, again, a budget is, um, kind of a breathing document. So, this is something that we start with, of where you feel the funds need to be allocated, but when, you know, when life happens, different things happen, and you can, you move funding around to, uh, fund your, um, your needs within this budget. So, um, I feel that you have that flexibility, and I, I don't understand why you didn't think you did, but, um, I think this is a great conversation to have, and, and we're here to, um, to create the budget the way that you feel fit.
Thank you.
I think we don't think we do, because we're often told we don't. I, I mean, for four years, in the beginning, I, um, purchased, because we didn't have a communication tool to do, send out newsletters, and, I mean, two of you will remember this conversation, meeting after meeting after meeting. I just had personally purchased, um, a, a software system to send out newsletters, and there was no, like, I kept being told, there's nothing in our budget to cover that cost, so I paid personally for it for a year and a half. And then we tried to do it as a board, and that, we got that one line item. So, apparently, we still don't have a line item for any communication to constituents, and I think that's what Mr., maybe, maybe the problem is solved today in two ways. One, we break out line item, I need new glasses. Seven, object seven thirty-seven, the 25,000 into five, five lines. And then, I would be interested, and maybe that, maybe, maybe, or maybe not, maybe we need a communication line, because I'm always interested in digital communication, you're interested in sending actual letters. Everybody has a different way of doing this, and there's no way to capture that. Or that, that individual line item of seven thirty-seven becomes more discretionary and flexible, and then you can decide, maybe, does that solve problems?
Yeah. I mean, just having the flexibility, which she said already exists, and Dr. Mullins even, you know, I think we're all on the same page, we just, there were some barriers that were done, and, and, you know, when we, all of a sudden, thought we could use some money, there was, it wasn't there, and I just think a process and transparency. I mean, I would love to print our budgets and tell, you know, have it to where, just like you said, it's great, let's, let's have it by board member, let's put it out there, what we spend, and, and I'm all about that.
Yeah, and then we'll send that out monthly, so we can see where we are on funding.
Sounds good. Or if it's not a lot of work for you, I mean...
That, that's fine, we, we do it monthly.
Ms. Belford?
Yes, Ms. Eskerbar.
I'm sorry. If, if you do divide up the 25,000, and each member has 5,000, and then the dues come out of the FSBA, whatever, Mrs. Lysinski, we can transfer those monies to, we can allocate those monies to communication tools or whatever, correct?
Correct, correct.
So...
That would solve...
I don't think that's a problem.
She's just saying one, one item for each board member, is that what she's saying?
Yeah, and then it can be allocated as needed, that would, makes me happy.
I'm good with that, Ms. Duskovich?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Ms. Lysinski, that's doable for you and your team, not, not going to cause any accounting issues or anything like that?
No, that's very doable.
Okay. And then, um, I would suggest, Board, as we do our, you know, we, we're now scheduling quarterly board check-ins, if not more frequently, um, I think we could probably just make a standing, um, point at those check-ins to, to visit our budget together and address any concerns that we have throughout the year. Does that work for everybody?
Excellent idea.
Yep.
So, the remaining dollars that we have from this year, are we going to be able to use those for communications now? Or are we going to say, moving forward, that we're only going to do this, and we're going to allow the money that was put into another account to continue to be in there? What are, that's, that was part, that was the main reason this was brought up, was to be able to send out communications. And the reason, like I said, was because I just said, hey, I want to send some letters out to all those people, because we don't have their emails, we don't have their phone numbers that live in that area, to say, this was a joint effort between the county and us. Um, are we able to do that or no?
I think that's certainly open for discussion. My only concern would be, we know that we are facing a really difficult year, and if our, ooh, almost $12,000 can, um, can go to support the multitude of expenditures that we have coming up this year, that's just my...
I think it would be a good motion, you're right.
Yeah, just, just for now. I mean, I think going forward, we can certainly plan and anticipate, but, um, I just feel like we need to sacrifice along with the rest of our, our team personally at this point in time.
Can I ask one other quick question? Uh, Mr. Gibbs, this may be a question for you. If we have a pie coordinator that is willing to pick up some of the, like, you want to do digital communication, right? If there's a pie corp, pie, a pie business partner that may want to sponsor our communications to put their logo on there or something like that, that's not an issue, is it?
No, you can sell, it'd be like a newspaper, like schools have their school newspaper, they go out and sell ads for that newspaper to then generate their funds to pay for the cost of printing that newspaper. So, basically, you would have a newsletter for the board that you sell ad space for to cover the cost of the newsletter, I mean, I think that would be okay.
I think we just have to be really careful there. Like, that sounds very, um, we should have to be really careful.
Well, I just, I, I'm thinking about, um, Ms. Foley and Ms. Almond, who are going out and soliciting, you know, our business partners all the time for helping with our schools. I just, I know, I just hate to, to, to jump in on that, and, you know, we're asking them so much, you know, for things that are directly involving, you know, helping our teachers and helping our students, to kind of, I, I don't know, I, I don't know that I'm super comfortable with that thought.
But we can do it anyway, right, Paul?
The board would have to decide what it wants to do, I mean, so...
Because, just to clarify, he's not talking about a board newsletter, he's talking about, you know, a Duskovich newsletter, a Susan newsletter.
I want to send out, I want to send out a newsletter and the board, and it, it, it may be at the same opportunity for advertising that somebody else does, so you can get them to cover the cost of the actual postage or something to save our budget. So, it's just like what a school does, where they send out a newsletter, and they put their, their business partner down in the lower right-hand corner, and it's part of their message. I mean, I, I don't think there's anything, you just said, there's nothing wrong with that if an individual wants to do it.
As an organization, you could do that, but you couldn't advertise that unless the board chose to do that. You would have, if it said school board, it would have to be something this school board decided, like Matt Susan couldn't send out a school board newsletter that he's sending out personally, it would have to be board-approved.
Or it would be like Matt Susan's newsletter, could I do that?
I think the issue there, Mr. Susan, is that's just like a vendor buying us dinner.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're elected officials, we then have to claim that as a gift to us, individually as elected officials, as opposed to if we actually, if we did it, if it was the entire board sending out a newsletter, and each of us had a section in the newsletter...
Yeah.
Then it's not...
It wouldn't, it would be more a contribution to the organization, which is not prohibited. If you're sending it out personally, then that's you receiving funds.
Got it.
That would be the difference. Like, I thought you were saying, can the board generate a newsletter and have advertising? You can certainly do that, but it would be the board, it wouldn't be Matt Susan has his own, and then Ms. Belford has his own.
So, if we wanted to get a business partner to cover the cost of that, it would be legal, but we would just all have to discuss it prior to that and make it as a board decision.
And it would be a donation to the board.
Right.
Or if you had a printing partner who just wanted their logo on the back printed by, on behalf of the school board, you could certainly do that, if you did want...
Just trying to put options out there, not saying that we're going to do it, but just putting options out there as an opportunity to cover some of the cost, that's all.
And just like your newspapers, I, you have rules, like schools have rules, what ads are appropriate for newspapers ads, because I know when I was on the newspaper staff, they said you can't go to, like, bars or anything, selling alcohol, that would be inappropriate. You can set up your policies and procedures on what would be an appropriate ad for the organization, but it would be organizational.
Makes sense.
On the topic of newsletters, though, it just suggests that, you know, we had that membership, which was only, and it was digital, it wasn't print, and I think you're saying you would like to have the option of print. But we had the newsletter option for the last, yeah, almost, since I've been on at least, or almost the whole time, and then until we canceled just a few months ago, it was 800 something dollars. And the reason why, which, you know, Ms. Eskerbar explained, was covered by GNCR, but the reason why it was discontinued was not because of the cost, it was because we weren't, you know, be completely honest, I think the, what the things that we were trying to accomplish with it were accomplished by government community relations' stepped-up efforts to communicate with, um, with the community. And so, there, there, all of a sudden, there wasn't the need for us to reiterate, repeat information that was coming through their, you know, their increased communication. So, I, I, I mean, if we want to do a board newsletter, we, but we kind of had the opportunity to, I don't know that we were going to be saying anything different than, than is going out through so many different avenues now from the district.
But I think, Ms. Campbell, what Mr. Susan's saying is, for example, if, if we as a board decided that we wanted to send letters to the community of Ralph Williams, that could be something that could be sponsored, as long as it's from the board and not from an individual board member. Um, and I think obviously that would necessitate discussion among the board members before it occurred, um, because we need to all agree that it's something that we, we want to, to spend dollars on, and, and, or, you know, if, if it's partially paid for or whatever, um, but it would be representative of the entire board, um, in that situation. So, we would have to have some discussion there.
We just need to bring the policies and procedures up to speed with what's going on currently, and have the flexibility and options to create the transparency that we need in order to do some of the effective things we need to as board members, that's all. Like, things come up, we talked about doing a, a group board, um, you know, uh, going to class and, and working together for, and, and how does that work? We just need the flexibility, that's all.
So, do, are, are we good? We've agreed, we're going to break out that 25,000, we're going to do regular check-ins on the board budget, um, we'll get the, the budget report monthly, is there anything else that we need to address?
Mr. Susan just rubbed something, made me, reminded me, we had talked, um, previously at one of the other workshops, or we were discussing this, about doing a joint professional development, bringing in someone, we've brought people in before who just donated, like the, the lady who came in last summer for us, that you asked who donated their time, but if we do break it out, just, I mean, I'm not saying we don't, if we do break it out into the separate, then we don't have a large chunk of money to bring someone in, um, because that leaves us each about, those of us who are in FSBA, about $300 apiece, and then Ms. Duskovich, you're the one who's got the, you've got the money to spend. Um, so we might need to figure out how we would do that.
You'll have to be nice to me, so I donate mine for, so we can bring somebody in each year.